Okay, we have a quarrel. I will call the June Planning Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hunter Law?
Here.
Mr. McCurley? Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Staton?
Here.
Mr. Kincaid?
Here.
Mayor Grossman?
Here.
Mr. Paredo?
Here.
Okay, I need approval from our main minutes. Motion to approve.
Again?
Motion, second, call the roll.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Paredo?
Yes.
And Mr. Hunter Law?
Yes.
Okay, the first item, 11110 Reading Road rezoning, and it's a public hearing at 7:01. I will open the public hearing. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to share my screen real quick. There we go. Again, Planning Commission, the applicant is requesting approval of a rezoning of 2.7, approximately 2.7 acres of land located behind 1110 Reading Road. This is, as you can see, just southeast of the corner of Western Row Road and Reading Road. It's kind of behind the shopping center and up adjacent to a lot of those I-1 lots that you see there. The proposed rezoning is consistent, as you can see, to the lots to the south and the east. And with this request, they would retain, I believe, about two acres at the front of the property along Reading Road of the B3 zoning consistent with the Reading Road frontage. With the rezoning, we have a number of questions that you see in your memo that we address when we review each rezoning. In general, this request conforms with those questions. It is compatible with the adjacent land uses due to it being adjacent to industrial land and located off the Reading Road frontage. So kind of the commercial nature of Reading Road would be preserved while the kind of this parcel in the back or this area of land in the back could be developed industrially or with a more industrial use similar to its adjacent parcels. The city's land use map identifies the property as neighborhood mixed use, but it is adjacent to property identified as light industrial and industrial park. So similar to the rezoning, even though it's not identified as industrial, it is adjacent to industrial, just like the zoning. With that, staff recommends that Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval of the proposed rezoning based on its compatibility with its surrounding properties. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Liz. To the Planning Commission, anybody have a question, comment? Okay. This is a public hearing, so are there anybody watching that has questions or have any against this proposal?
If you do have a question or do you want to like to speak for or against this rezoning, we'd ask you to raise your hand. There's a button there if you can raise your hand and I can acknowledge you by allowing you to speak. So at this time, if you would like to speak for or against this rezoning, please raise your hand and we will give you permission to speak. Mr. Painter, I'll allow you to talk. Rob, can you hear us?
I can, thanks.
Can you state your name and address?
This is Rob Painter, 6230 Center Park Drive, West Chester, Ohio 45069. I'm here on behalf of the owner for the rezoning and just to make myself available for questions. Obviously, we're in favor of the rezone, as Liz stated, so I'm here if you need me.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any questions for Rob?
And at this time, there are nobody else raising their hand.
Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing at 7:04. Entertained a motion or further questions?
Lloyd, you have a question or an intent of motion?
A motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve PC 2020-013RZ.
Second.
For a motion, the second, please call the roll.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Paredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item, Rhine Stall Global Headquarters Site and Landscape Plan. Liz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting approval of site and landscape plan for the new Rhine Stall Global Headquarters. This is located just north of Masters Pharmaceuticals on State Route 741. The property is zoned I-1, light industrial, and the use conforms with that zoning designation. You'll see that the 49-acre site includes a just under 270,000 square foot office and warehouse facility in Phase 1. That's the dark brown with the black outline. That's Phase 1. And has additional future phases, as you can see, Phase 2, 3, and 4. So those are future buildings, not to be considered with this first phase. Large rectangle or the large square, is there a warehouse portion of the building? And the kind of irregular triangle-shaped portion of the building for Phase 1 is their office component. The site is designed with a large retention basin out front and kind of the guest parking lot to the front and to the side. This is the full site plan for all the phases, so not all this parking will be constructed in the first phase. But I wanted to show you the full overview so you could get a sense of kind of their proposed full build-out. The landscape plan includes buffering and street trees along 741 and the proposed R&amp;D roadway. This is the proposed road, the extension of the proposed road that you saw last month with the PCC buildings. Those buildings were located off of this same proposed roadway that will connect through from this property all the way to 42. The building itself, you can see here, the glass portion on the top, onto the left, is their main kind of office component. It is two stories in height and is constructed primarily out of glass and accented by architectural metal panels. The office component, which is the larger kind of white area, is the warehousing and manufacturing area that will be constructed out of painted concrete panels. Staff would like to, you know, acknowledge how well the site plan is put together and how excited we are for the future of Rhine Stall in the city of Mason and, you know, the work that has gone into these well-designed plans. So with that, staff recommends approval of the site and landscape plan. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions for Liz? I have one question. When I was looking at the overall improvements for the roadway, when is there going to be a roundabout in front on 741?
Mr. Chair, actually, I'll take that one. Yes, there will be a roundabout. We are working with Rhine Stall and the next applicant to coordinate that location of that roundabout as well as the timing of it and the design of it. So yes, you can see that on the lower portion of the screen. That is a proposed roundabout at the new intersection of the R&amp;D Road and State Route 741, which will obviously calm speeding, obviously, safety factors, all the benefits of a roundabout being installed there to help accentuate this development as well as, you know, check the box of the proposed intersection being saved and with the traffic generation stats. This road could see in the future with the expansion of these facilities. We want to make sure we set ourselves up. So that's why it's a dual lane configuration and we've had some traffic checks to make sure it's a little better for today and for the future.
Okay, and ODOT is behind this also? Oh, okay.
ODOT, we have them as a resource, but this is our road that we get to maintain and get to make decisions on. And ODOT is their resource, but it's not something we have to run by them.
Okay, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad. Okay. Any questions?
When was the last traffic study done?
We just did, we just did traffic counts on 741 within the last three or four years, as well as we had our consultant generated traffic for this intersection based upon kind of the full build-out and it's, obviously, it would function as it would when it's in full configuration or full build-out.
My concern was with the Kings Island traffic on a Saturday morning, the traffic already backs up past Avalon. Wonder what will happen when there's a roundabout there? Think that'll help it or hinder it?
Well, that traffic backup will actually be remedied by the improvements we're doing to 741 south of here. So right now, obviously, 741 is a two-lane roadway down through basically Parkside Drive. In the next five years, 741 will be five lanes from this roundabout down to Parkside. The city has four projects that we're working on in that stretch of that section of roadway. That will alleviate that backup. But to your point of the roundabout, it actually helps because it'll speed, it'll slow cars down coming into the city as well as provide a safe means of an intersection, not only when Kings Island's in session, but you know, the rest of the city.
I agree, it'd slow them down if they were headed north till they got past the roundabout and took off again. But how would the traffic, how would you take a left out of Avalon if the road's a four-lane road?
Well, it would be, I mean, it would be stayed the way you're, what you're taking left out now. And we actually, to your point, we are looking with that roundabout design, we are looking at the Avalon intersection as well. Looking at the site distance as you look left out of that intersection because there is a bit of a sightline issue there, we've realized.
There's a little hump there in the hill, yeah.
Correct. So we are going to correct that with this roundabout project. We're actually going to improve the 741 site distance all the way up through Avalon, which will include a bike path connection as well as, like I said, that improved roadway to address those safety concerns.
Yeah, if that little crest was taken out of there, I think that'd help.
Correct. And that's exactly what we're going to do. It's actually about a foot cut we need to take out perhaps to make it, bring it up to 50 miles an hour design standard to make a left turn out of that intersection.
And I guess if it's four lane, that'd be a no passing area?
Well, actually, it'd be five lanes and then that, the northbound, the northbound right drop lane would basically drop off at Avalon, like what you currently have. You have, there's a right drop into that intersection. And then we would line up the five lanes and then the five-lane section would stop right there at Avalon. So you'd only have one southbound lane and northbound lanes, but the outside curb lane would drop at that intersection. So it really would be a three-lane section after Avalon.
Yeah.
So all the three traffic would basically be in that middle center lane to go northbound like this.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, good question. Thanks, Lloyd. Anybody else?
No questions.
Okay. I would like to recognize Rhine Stall is in attendance this evening. We have Mr. Dieter Mohler and Mr. Tom Johnston that are our attendees this evening, as well as the applicant, Rob Cooper. So if Tom or Dieter would like to say a few words, let me know. And just want to let Planning Commission know that they are in attendance this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay. No further comments? Motion from Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve PC 2020-014.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Paredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item, Mason Research and Development Park Final PUD and Landscape Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposed, or the city of Mason is requesting approval of a final planning and development and landscape plan for the Mason Research and Development Park. The proposed development consists of six lots located east of 741 between Welding Drive and Avalon Trail. This is directly across the street from Rhine Stall that you just saw. You can see the roundabout there at the proposed R&amp;D Road 741. So we're just right across the street from there. There are four lots proposed on the north side of the R&amp;D roadway, three with proposed high-tech industrial uses and one with an open space lot, and two lots on the south side, one lot for a industrial use and then another for open space. The concept plan for this project was approved back in January 2000. I don't know if Dick remembers it, maybe the only one probably around on the Planning Commission back then. The original concept plan was an industrial PUD but included 15 lots of various sizes and intensities of industrial uses. So the revised final PUD is less intense than that original plan and further developed, but substantially the same in terms of uses and intent. The parcels that you see in front of you, the one to the southeast of the roundabout is the proposed Vegas America Building. That is next on our agenda, so you'll see that in a little bit more detail with the next agenda item. The additionally, with the final PUD plan, you'll see along the northern boundary, the kind of the darker green represents a 100-foot buffer from the adjacent residential zoning to the north of the PUD. The PUD code requires a 75-foot buffer, but that has been increased to 100 feet with this proposal. And additionally, there's been some kind of design intentions to put detention basins in the back to further buffer these future industrial buildings from the adjacent residential. There are no site plan proposals in front of you for the three lots to the north. Those are conceptual at this point. So those may change when we have a final user for those site plans, for those lots as well. The final PUD includes, again, the overall buffer plan and streetscape plan for the PUD and the street trees. The covenants and restrictions are included. They are the same covenants restrictions that are applying to many of the industrial lots in this North Mason Industrial Park. The PUD plan also establishes the peripheral setbacks for the development. Reduced internal setbacks are shown along the R&amp;D Road to allow for additional buffering to the north and making the, you know, the site plans along R&amp;D still very developable and appropriate while maintaining that buffer to the north. So with that, staff recommends approval of the final PUD and landscape plan as a minor modification to the PUD. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Liz, do we have to handle the minor modification as a separate issue?
We worded the recommendation, so you could do it as one. Whoever does the motion could just motion for approval of the site or the final PUD and landscape plan as a minor modification. And you could just do that as one vote.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Liz?
I have a question. Could those three lots be combined? Is that possible? That could be one big company or is it definitely going to be three?
Until there's an end user for those lots, you know, we don't know for sure what those are going to look like. This is the intention at the moment, and the designer designed these lots to kind of their maximum capacity for the size of lots and the buffers and everything. But if a user comes in and wants to do something different, we would have to evaluate that. And then based on what they were asking, the Planning Commission and staff would make that determination if it was a minor or major amendment to this PUD. So until there's a final kind of user, we can't say for sure what it's going to look like. But we do have that minor and major modification process, you know, based on what kind of is proposed and if it meets, if it conforms with this final PUD or not.
Could they also be subdivided?
Into smaller lots? I don't, I mean, again, I think it would be the same thing. I am not recalling if we've set a minimum lot size for these parcels in the covenants. But if they were, if somebody came in and wanted to do something smaller and denser, we would have to, you know, the Planning Commission would have to make that determination if it was a minor modification and if it was appropriate. And so if, you know, based on what they were asking, we would go through that process.
I got you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chairman? Sure. I just wanted to point out that what I'm reading here, it says that current setback for PUD is normally 75 feet, but this final PUD shows 100 feet. So everything against Avalon, it looks like, and anything else up there does have that additional 25 feet. So it's 100 feet no matter what building configuration that ends up being. I think that's a plus.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Any motion?
I can make the motion to approve PC 2020-015 FDLP as a minor modification.
We have a motion, we have a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Paredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staton?
Yes.
Okay, Vega Americas, Inc., North American Headquarters, Final PUD and Landscape Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this will look familiar. This was, is Lot E of the PUD that you just saw. The applicant is requesting a final PUD and landscape plan for Vega's North American Headquarters. This facility will include the business's office and production facility of their advanced measuring devices. So again, just to orient yourself, we're on the east side of 741, south of that future R&amp;D roadway. Their site is 49 acres in size and it includes the dark brown building, which is their Phase 1 building, which is approximately 232 square feet, and some areas for future building expansion. Those are the lighter brown kind of transparent areas. Those are their areas expected for future growth in, at a later time. The proposal includes two large detention ponds along the 741 frontage, walking trails that link throughout the site, and their guest and employee parking on the north side of the site adjacent to the future R&amp;D roadway. There's a large plaza out in front. That's kind of the light brown area in front of the building that has landscaping islands and the kind of drop-off area for cars. And their back storage and service area is located at the southern portion of the site. The building is proposed to be two stories in height. The front entrance and office portion of the building will be constructed with a wood grain metal panel system, storefront windows and brick, as you can see in the renderings in front of you. And the manufacturing area will be constructed with precast concrete panels and brick veneer. So you can see the impact of the proposed building. Again, the landscape plan, to wrap it up, includes trees and shrubs and mounding throughout the site to buffer the site from the adjacent road frontages and to provide the required interior and exterior parking lot landscaping and building perimeter landscaping. Once again, staff would like to acknowledge the design team on this project with such a well-designed and thought-out plan. And with that, staff recommends approval of the site, of the final PUD and landscape plan, again, as a minor amendment. So let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Eric?
Yes.
Hi. Well, more of a comment, really. These plans are incredible. And when we got to know the leadership and some of the employees from Vega that came for luncheon in Mason, it was very clear that they have a unique and wonderful culture, and wellness is a big part of that. But it was so exciting to get to know them. And I just am looking at these plans and thinking how that reflects their unique, positive, energetic culture, attention to details. It's impressive. So that's exciting. But also, I did want to ask, do you guys want these plans back? We have these beautiful, the plans that no doubt were expensive. Do you want us to return them to you at some point?
I don't think we need them back. They'll be, they'll be moving forward with, you know, based on the recommendation tonight, they'll be moving forward CDs and construction plans. So you can hang on to them for future reference, I guess. And I would like to point out to Planning Commission, Mr. John Cronenberger is on as an attendee this evening. As Mayor Grossman alluded to, he was an integral part of bringing his employees up on a couple of buses back before COVID. And when they announced this, and did a really nice job recognizing their employees and bringing them up there to show their future home. So he is available for questions. And Mr. Cronenberger, if you'd like to say a few words, please let us know. We'd be happy to unmute you if you'd like to do that. And he's raising his hand, and I will allow John, unmute your mic.
All right, I think I'm on. Is that right, Steve?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, just, this is John Cronenberger with Vega, and I just want to say thank you to Mason and the Planning Commission for reviewing our site plans tonight. I can tell you, we're very excited to continue our process to build our campus of the future, our advanced manufacturing campus of the future. The team at BHDP is just doing an awesome job building or designing our plant, and we're looking forward to getting started. You know, one thing that Mayor Grossman mentioned is our focus on our employees and wellness. And I just want to bring up one other thing on the right side there. You're going to see our walking path, jogging path. We're going to make sure our employees make this a stay place. We don't want it to be a place that they come and leave every day. We want it to be a place that they come and enjoy and make it their home for a career. So we're excited to get started. Thank you very much for your time. The January event was amazing. Still talked about today at Vega. Frankly, our team in Germany is a little jealous that we got to enjoy all that. They're looking forward to coming, and I can tell you, there's 217 employees in Oakley right now that are super pumped to come to Mason. Thank you.
Mr. Cronenberger, we are as excited as you are, and we're so pleased that you decided to move to Mason and to be a part of our city and this new R&amp;D park.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. But I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve PC 2020-016 FDLP as a minor
Make a motion to approve PC 2020 dash 016 FD LP as a minor amendment, please. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please call the rule.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Mr. Pereno?
Yes.
Mr. Harlow?
Yes.
Mr. McCurley?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Staten?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Well, this morning I looked at the website for Rheinstall, read their history. I know that they've been very successful and that we're so pleased that their expansion is going to be in the City of Mason and in this new R and D park. I also looked at Vega and I, I, I'm excited. I think this is a great opportunity for both of us, for the City of Mason and for Vega and obviously Rheinstall. And congratulations to both of these companies and thank you so much for choosing the City of Mason for your history. And it's only taken 20 years, 20 years for these two great companies to become part of this that we had thought about 20 years ago. So I think it's a great move for, for the city and for the companies. Anybody else?
If there's anybody out there, uh, recognition of visitors, I would like to speak, please raise your hand. Um, and we can, uh, you can address planning commission.
Okay. Uh, our next meeting is Wednesday, July the 8th, 2020. And does any planning commission members have a, something to say or question or comment? Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposing, aye? We are adjourned and thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for reminding about Wes finding one saying something.
Yeah, I'm here.
Can you switch over be from planning commission to the council screen at 7:45?
I, we actually don't have a council's screen since it was a emergency one.
Is there any way to make one real quick?
I might be able to find it all on with the wrong date. Otherwise, it'd be this or an executive session.
Okay, stay tuned. We're trying to figure something out.
Something to just share our screen. I just say Mason. I just.
And there you go.
I dropped the graphic. If you wanted to try changing your name to like Mason Council meeting or whatever you'd like to say, it'll show up on the screen while we wait.
So just change the name to. City of Mason Council Meeting and you'll just show that participant up.
Correct.
So just change your name, change your name of that to rename it a more rename. City of Mason. So meeting. Can you just show that one then? Or do you want to show? Dean, what the? Dean, is that working for sharing the screen?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I just got the file from my boss. So I'll see if I can get an official one too.
Great.
Just need to edit it first.
Thank you, Dean.
Hello, Councilmember Strecula.
Hey Jennifer, how are you? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, doing well.
Perfect. Perfect. We've had some really nice weather lately. I mean, today was a little hot, but. But it's been pretty good.
I know. It's been beautiful. Except for I just told Eric, what happens if the electricity goes out here? It looks like a storm's rolling in.
Yeah, I was gonna say there's one coming in, so. I don't know.
Just so everyone knows, as we're joining, we are still live on YouTube from the planning commission meeting. Just before you say anything, you don't want to on air.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Dean. I had a whole list of laundry list of things I was gonna say.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff, how are you?
I'm doing fine, thanks.
Mayor and council members that are joining us, hello. How are you?
Good to see you. I miss you guys.
Yes, I'm hoping that'll soon all be over. But I just want everybody, we are live.
Oh. Okay. I hope nobody heard me telling my kid to get out of here. Matthew, we're actually.
All right, are we looking good to start?
We're waiting on one more. Give us just a moment here, Dean.
Okay, no problem.
Tony had a is had a software update. He should be joining in moments.
I had to do that too today. It just about gave me a heart attack. So he probably wasn't expecting that either.
Maybe while we're waiting, I did send down an email with the revision of the resolution. There was a small typo when it that was removed. So I think Jeff has the revised version. All of you should have it. I know Jeff's prepared to read it. And it looks like Tony.
Yeah, I'm here. Do you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Dean, that's everyone. I think we're ready to start. I believe. Looks like we're live there.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city of Mason and our special meeting of council. Oh, my goodness, I forgot today's date. What is it? Oh, it is June 3rd. 2020. We're so glad that you could join us tonight. Thank you to my colleagues and to our staff and to Dean from ICRC who came together for us on such short notice. This is a time sensitive discussion that we're going to have tonight resident, resolution 2020 dash three. And so before we start that, we need to call to order by calling the role as well. Thank you. I think I'm a little rusty. I've missed you guys.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Chance. Councilmember Bradburn. Councilmember Stricula.
Here.
Councilmember Gil.
Here.
Councilmember Hunter Law.
Here.
Mayor Gressman.
Here. Great. Vice Mayor Gil, would you mind opening us up with a little prayer?
Certainly. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight. Again, Father, reminiscent of the troubles in our land. Father, we just pray for your intervention, help bring healing and strength to our community. Blessed as we even as we recover from this pandemic and give us wisdom and guidance tonight in our deliberations. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, our regularly scheduled meeting will be on Monday, June 8th. We're squeezing this one in because of its time sensitive nature. Governor Dewine is expected to announce what and. And if he will allow for the tourism and amusement industries to resume operations in Ohio, we think maybe as early as tomorrow. We're very grateful for his service and we are hopeful that he will open tourism and amusement industries without restrictions that will bring further economic distress to those local businesses. And so without further ado, Jeff will need you to guide us a little bit with protocol, but we need to read this resolution into the public record.
Of course, thank you, Mayor. This is resolution 2020 dash three, a resolution urging Governor Dewine and Director Acton for a wholly open economy and declaring an emergency. Whereas on March 9th, 2020, Governor Dewine declared a state of emergency in Ohio and since March 11th, 2020, Department of Health Director Dr. Amy Acton and Governor Dewine have issued over three dozen special orders in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the special orders in response to COVID-19 were issued to flatten the curve such that the total number of coronavirus cases were reduced to avoid a surge in cases that could have overwhelmed the healthcare system, leading to avoidable deaths. And whereas, as of June 3rd, 2020, in Ohio, Ohioans have flattened the curve. The health system, the healthcare system has not been overwhelmed and the healthcare system is equipped with ventilators and PPE to handle a surge in COVID-19 if it were to occur. And whereas in the city of Mason, Warren County, and all of Ohio, local businesses and families are suffering unsustainable losses and irreparable harm from restrictions that are no longer the least restrictive means necessary to protect those most at risk of harm from COVID-19. And whereas Mason City Council recognizes the legitimate public purpose to promote and protect the well being of our ecosystem of residents, businesses, and schools, all of which reinforce one another and depend on a wholly open economy. And whereas Mason City Council agrees with Governor Dewine that the economy and wellness are intertwined and that we can do two things at once by promoting an open economy and public safety. And we therefore believe restrictions on the free market beyond those that legitimately meet the rigors of a compelling government interest with the least restrictive measures be reconsidered and repealed to facilitate economic recovery. And whereas Mason City Council has recognized the significance of small locally owned businesses and has adopted unique legislation, ordinances 2020 dash 43, 46, 51, and 52, authorizing over $2 million in small business recovery stimulus, the success of which depends on a wholly open economy. And whereas Warren County's top industry is tourism. Warren County is Ohio's largest playground and the third fastest growing county in Ohio, and Mason's tourism revenue is generated by attractions such as King's Island, Great Wolf Lodge, and the Western and Southern Open, which are gravely at risk. And whereas prior to COVID-19, Warren County tourism generated significant economic impact with 12.3 million visitors, $1.244 billion in visitor spending, and almost 12,000 jobs generating $285 million in wages. And whereas King's Island, Great Wolf Lodge, and the Western and. And whereas Kings Island, Great Wolf Lodge, and the Western and Southern Open account for nearly 4 million visitors and millions in economic benefit annually to Mason and Warren County. And whereas 2019 was a record breaking year for tourism in the state of Ohio, which ranked seventh in the nation for tourism. And whereas Mason City Council agrees with Governor DeWine when he stated on May 8th, 2019, just over one year ago, there is so much to see and do in Ohio. We have great places to visit, art, culture, outdoor adventures, museums, and so much more. Tourism is not only fun, but it is also such an important part of our economy. Tourism provides jobs and improves our quality of life. And whereas tourism is part of an economic ecosystem of businesses, attractions, employment, and amenities of all types that are interconnected and unable to thrive under the Ohio government's current restrictions on the free market. And whereas Warren County's and Mason's tourism industry, jobs, wages, and revenue are at risk. And whereas Mason City Council recognizes the legitimate public purpose to promote the well being of all Mason businesses in Mason's and Warren County's tourism ecosystem of support industries, attractions, amenities, and employment opportunities, all of which reinforce one another and depend on a wholly open economy. And whereas Mason City Council recognizes individuals, businesses, and employees need restoration to lawfully exercise individual responsibility, accountability, and freedom of choice as protected by our constitution through wholly restored commerce under the least restrictive measures necessary to meet a compelling government interest. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Mason, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring Section 1, that on this day, June 3rd, 2020, Mason City Council petitions Governor DeWine and Dr. Amy Acton to open all Ohio commerce, including tourism. Section 2, that all government restrictions and mandates related to COVID-19 that are no longer supported by a compelling government interest using the least restrictive means be reduced to recommendations. Section 3, that Governor DeWine and Director Acton restore Ohio businesses' rights to lawfully determine their own operational capacities and safety standards of best practice to promote the safety of their employees and visitors. Section 4, that Governor DeWine and Director Acton protect and promote the individuals' rights and personal responsibilities to lawfully choose and manage their own risks and safety standards of best practice for themselves and their families. Section 5, that any future restrictive measures must meet the rigors of the least restrictive measures necessary to meet a compelling government interest in partnership with the Ohio State Legislature to protect Ohio's economy as well as its most vulnerable citizens. Section 6, that the Clerk of Council is hereby directed to send a certified copy of this resolution to Governor DeWine and Director Acton immediately upon its effective date. Section 7, that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare and shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. The reason for said declaration of emergency is the need to petition Governor DeWine and Director Acton for the relief included herein at the earliest possible date.
Okay, so. Do I make, do I ask for a motion to adopt? At this, this time?
So, so it's been read in its entirety. Generally, the next thing, in order to act on it tonight, you would typically request a motion to allow for adoption after the first reading.
Okay. Is there such a motion to allow for the adoption after a first reading?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Right. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Hunter Law?
Mayor, I just want to thank you for taking the lead on this. I think it's an important issue and I think this is something we must do as a city for being able to help. I think speak to Governor DeWine because I know how much he values Warren County and Mason. So I think this is something that that should speak loudly to him on what he thinks we should be doing right here for the state. If you follow us, our state rep Paul Zellwanger and on social media at all, you'll see he's been a great champion for us and for this and how important this is for our economy and for our small businesses is to for for the governor to open up the state. Thank you for taking care of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Stricula?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that we haven't shown a sense of urgency on really anything that we've done over the past 10 to 12 weeks. So I find the timing of this a little odd. So I'm curious as to why the sense of urgency now. I'm also, I mean, frankly, I find it insensitive. I find it ignorant to schedule an emergency meeting to discuss this, given the backdrop of the social and cultural unrest that we have right now. So anyway, so I'm surprised that all of a sudden right now, especially given that we have a meeting on Monday to talk about a letter to the governor, why we scheduled a meeting with the minimum amount of public notice, frankly. So I like an answer to that. I don't necessarily have a problem with the resolution. Paragraph, save one issue. As a matter of fact, I like quite a few things in here. So let me talk about that. The things that I do like. Section 3 and section 4 specifically, again, restoring Ohio businesses' rights to lawfully determine their own operational capacities and safety standards, excuse me. And then section 4. As the governor, Dr. Acton, to protect and promote individuals' rights and personal responsibilities, lawfully choose and manage their own risk and safety. I think those are extremely important. So I do appreciate those comments. One thing that I would like removed from the resolution is paragraph 7. It mentions that we've taken significance. She didn't recognize the significance of small locally owned businesses to adopt a unique legislation. Ordnances 2020-43, 46, 51, and 52. I would like 46 removed. Is that is a do nothing ordinance and actually doesn't, well, it doesn't do anything. It was a political smokescreen when it happened, pointing to 51 and 52. So if we remove that, I am, I would be for voting for this to pass as an emergency. That's the only thing. Thank you.
Hey, would you like for me to address your questions first or do you want to make a motion to amend paragraph 7 and strike the number 46?
I'll make a motion to amend paragraph 7 to strike out 46, ordinance 46 from the paragraph.
Is there such a motion? I mean, such a, is there a second for that motion? I'm sorry. Okay, no, no second. Okay.
Then I'm sorry, I can't, I won't be, I won't vote for this as an emergency. I can't, I'm not going to send a letter to the governor.
I'll second it.
Trying to, thank you.
Let's call the roll.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn? Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Was that everybody? Okay, so that motion passes. So as amended, we will not have items or ordinance 2020-46 in there. That was our placeholder ordinance. Okay, I'm going to do my best to remember your question. Do you have a question about timing and why the sudden sense of urgency? And so the sudden sense of urgency is this. I've been discussing this matter with Jeff Forbes and some other elected officials in the area and some people that are some other public officials such as those at the Warren County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I've had contact with people that have been on the advisory board to the governor and those that are in the know with the tourism industry from the private sector. And so my plan was to present this to you all on June 8th. In fact, we had to go through the document today and change the dates. But we heard an announcement and we kept thinking, oh, things are going to change. Things are going to change any day. And then yesterday, the government, Governor announced that he would be making some decisions and announcements this Thursday, which is tomorrow. And so I was thinking about the fact that we had planning commission. So I just decided to go ahead and call an emergency meeting. And so there was no nefarious intention behind that or insensitivity. It's actually, you know, a sense of urgency because we're in a unique position to advocate for these small businesses that are really struggling. And, you know, Warren County is really doing well and so is the state of Ohio. You know, there were very, very grave projections in early March and we haven't met those projections of, of, you know, the dire, dire consequences of COVID-19. And although there have been some deaths and those are very, very sad. You know, we now know so much more about the virus and which segments of our population are the most vulnerable and we now know a lot more about how to protect them. And so, you know, we're very anxious to advocate for these small businesses that have so many restrictions to follow that, you know, it's almost costing them money to stay open because they can't determine their own operational capacities. And those operational capacities capacities are so critical to establishing profit margins. So this is just an opportunity for us to take it one step further and really petition the governor and encourage him that we're doing so great in Warren County. It's healthy. We're really strong in Warren County. We've had very few cases, very few deaths, and the majority of the deaths have occurred in nursing care facilities. And so we know now so much more about how to protect those patients in those care facilities. And, you know, I don't have a lot of expertise at the moment to go through statistics, but suffice it to say, they're very, very low in Warren County. In fact, we've had up, up to date 17 deaths in Warren County out of 245,000 residents. That's really great. And, you know, it's sad that we've lost 17 people. So let me make sure that you understand that. But to have counts that are so low is so encouraging when we were hearing that, you know, we could be having 10,000 a day in Ohio. So we've never come close to the original projections and that's good. So we've done a lot. We've worked together as Ohioans. We have flattened the curve. The government and hospitals have been able to establish proper infrastructure there with enough P P E equipment and, and protocol measures. And so we're in great shape and we are anxious to free up these businesses and let the private sector and the capitalists decide what does the consumer want as far as what protocols to put into place based on the Ohio Department of Health's recommendations? And so, you know, I think we need to, it's time now to free up the private sector to do that. And the free market is really working hard on that. They want their consumers to feel safe. Okay. Can you help me out? What other questions did you, did you have? Timing? Why?
It was more of a, it was more of a statement. So thank you.
More of a statement. You're frustrated. Didn't you? Okay. So I'm really glad that you're supportive of this and I hope I was able to answer your questions. And does anybody else have anything? Yes, Mike Gil, Council, Vice Mayor Gil, excuse me.
Let me get off of a mute here and I.
Mike, you muted yourself accidentally.
There we go. Try that again. So I was, I'm trying to talk back and forth between the Zoom meeting and the proposed resolution. And I don't know if it's just the version I'm looking at on my screen or it seems to be missing commas after the whereas clauses grammatically and I'm, I'm just, I don't know if that's just my screen or there are, there are not commas, but I'm just going to ask that we amend the resolution to clean up their grammatical issues before it's presented to the governor so that it has the appropriate commas where the commas need to be. And, but, but otherwise, the resolution, I think, is on point. It certainly speaks to the fact that we understand the coronavirus more than we did back in March. And we certainly are concerned about protecting the life in our community and yet also continue to recognize that continuing shutdowns, continuing hurdles for businesses impact our economy, impact people in their own business, their own lives. And that's just as, as grave a concern as the, the health of the community and that we need to be able to address both of those issues at the same time. So I think it's an appropriate resolution to encourage the governor to let us do what we can do to protect the lives that we have in our community while at the same time getting our economy back where it needs to be and moving our economy forward. So I certainly support it in that regard. So I would make a motion to clean it up before it's presented to the governor.
Okay. Do we need to do anything special for the comma motion?
No, you don't need a motion for that. We'll, we're already going to be back in the document to make the the amendment that was already approved. We can make sure all the commas are in the appropriate places.
That's great. Vice Mayor, I want you to know I was involved in a robust debate over whether or not those commas should be placed after everywhere as. And it sounds like I just lost the debate. So I know, I know some people that'll be really happy about that except for me. I'm just kidding. Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you for your comments. I'm excited for Warren County. I'm excited for the state of Ohio. Things are going well. We thank our governor. We thank Dr. Acton for their hard work. And it's time to, it's time to open up and really be open and to spread our wings and fly and to let these businesses recover. And I'm so glad that we can come up alongside them in the city of Mason. Well, if there isn't any other discussion, we can call the roll. Is there, do I need to make any more motions to adopt?
Actually, we have not yet voted on the motion to allow for adoption after the first reading. So we'll need to pick a vote on that and then entertain a motion to adopt.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt after the first reading?
We already have, we already have a motion and a second for that. We just need to take a roll call.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Oh, wow.
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
And now it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-3?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Thank you. Wonderful, everyone. So the motion passes unanimously. And so we will get that to the governor and Dr. Acton as soon as possible. And I think that's it. So I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All the roll, please.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dean.
Yes, thank you, Dean.
Good night.